All right, let's call this meeting November 20th, 2024 over the West Casadez zoning board to order. Melissa, can you take role, please?
Yes, Jeff Huff is absent, Craig Connell.
Here.
John DeGrand.
Here.
Terry Atwell.
Here.
Donna Getzman.
Here.
Bob Paulson.
Here.
And Roger Spears.
Here.
Thank you. We do have a quorum, and I will proceed with the hybrid statement. This meeting is now being recorded in the board hearing room with zoning board members attending in person. There is also an option for virtual attendance on Zoom webinar. For Zoom participants wishing to speak, please use the raise hand function in the Zoom app at the start of the agenda item on which you desire to comment. Comments will be received from in-person attendees first, followed by Zoom participants. When it is your turn to speak, the moderator will recognize you by the name or phone number used to join the Zoom webinar, and your microphone will be unmuted. Please state your name and the city and state where you reside for the record, followed by your comments. All public speakers will be limited to three minutes unless the chair designates a different time period. If you have trouble with Zoom, please call 913-715-9666. Board members, staff, and presenters, please state your name every time you begin talking, and please speak into the microphone so your comments can be transcribed for the record. This is a public meeting. We are presenting live and recording the meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Melissa. So do we have any additions, deletions, revisions to the current agenda proposed from board?
Nope.
Nope. All right, agenda is approved. Any disclosure of conflicts of interest from any of the board members?
None.
Any disclosure of external contacts or discussions we should hear about? All right. Has everybody reviewed the minutes of last meeting? If so, can we get a motion to approve them if there's no comments?
Bob Paulson, I move to approve.
Roger Spears, I'll second.
All right. Can we take a vote on that? Are we going to do it at voice vote? Okay. Yeah, Olson and Favor approving the minutes from last meeting, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, the meetings are approved. Minutes are approved. Next, we have board reports. Give me the BOCC actions report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Sean Pendley, County Planning Staff. For Board of County Commissioners' actions on November 14th, the board approved some applications that were previously recommended for approval by this board. They approved the rezoning from RN2 Residential District to RUR for the property at 92nd and Rowan Road. This is for the 18-acre property. That was for RUR zoning that was approved. Also, there was a final plat for Spring Creek Farms on 146th Street. That plat was approved. And the board also approved a preliminary and final plat for eight lots of Walnut Valley near 115th Street and Waverly Road. Continuing on for Planning Commission updates. We did have a meeting in October with the Planning Commission. I'm sorry, I don't have the actual date. I believe that was the October Planning Commission meeting. We did have a presentation from Clarion Associates. They're our consultant that will be helping us with our zoning and subdivision regulations update. They'll be presenting an update on that project this evening. Jay will give an update on that, and we'll introduce our consultants shortly on that. We also had a training session at the last Planning Commission meeting with some updates for the planning commissioners regarding city-county collaboration and infrastructure planning. We do have also a meeting next Tuesday, November 26th, for the Planning Commission, and we'll be providing updates on a broadband plan for the county. We'll have Aaron Deacon with KC Digital Drive at that meeting to give an update to the Planning Commission, and then we'll also have another training topic for coordination, county department coordination for projects and application review. So that's it for Planning Commission actions. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
None. And we have an introduction here on the Clarion Associates presentation.
Good evening, everybody. Members of the zoning board, Jay Leipzig, the Planning Housing Community Development Director. I just wanted to take a couple of moments just to introduce our Planning Consultant. You've heard of, discussed the zoning and subdivision regulations for quite some time. We've talked, brought that up several times. We have engaged a consultant, Clarion and Associates, which is a planning firm out of Denver, Colorado, but they do have ties here to the Kansas City area. We'll talk about that. They have quite a bit of experience nationwide around the country doing this type of work. They're also partnering with Olson and Associates, which is a local engineering firm here in Kansas City as well to help us with this project. So this is a long intensive, has a long intensive scope of work, about 18 months to complete this. And this is the introduction to our planning teams. We wanted to let them take a few minutes this evening and present themselves to you. We have Elizabeth Garvin, who's the Director of Clarion Associates, is on our Zoom call this evening, as well as Paul Donigan is a Senior Associate with Clarion, is also on the call. And with that, I believe I'll turn it over to Elizabeth, and she has some introductory comments to make.
Jay, good evening, Commissioners. We have a fairly short presentation for you this evening. And as Jay said, we're just doing a project introduction at this point and kind of getting everyone oriented to the idea of the project itself, what it takes to update zoning and subdivision regulations. And we likely will be working with you off and on as we complete the various drafts throughout the next year, year and a half of drafting process. So this evening, Paul, let's go ahead and go to the next slide when you're ready. Work to introduce ourselves to you. We'll do the project overview. We're going to talk a little bit about community outreach. It will be something we do across the project. We'll talk about what our next steps are, including some stuff that's coming up really quickly, and take questions from you, should you have any for us at this point. Next slide. So here's our project team. I'm Elizabeth Garvin. As Jay mentioned, I'm one of the people that has deep ties to the community. I lived in Johnson County for some time and then ended up going to the University of Kansas and moved back to Kansas and then had a brief fling with Missouri and came out to Colorado about 15 years ago. I worked for H and T V when I was in the Kansas City area and for Lick, Lightner, Carlisle, and Shortledge. I'm an attorney and a planner, and I've been writing zoning codes for about 30 years, including some work I did back in the mists of time for Johnson County. Someday, I will dig that out, and we will all probably laugh about it, had to do a special district creation. I'm happy to be here with my colleague, Paul Donigan. He's a planner at Clarion Associates, and he's our Assistant Project Manager. We also have Eliza Blood with us on the call this evening, and Eliza is one of the newer Clarion Associates, and we're really excited to have her on this project. And we also work with Holly White, who's our graphics lead, and one of the important things that we want to do with code update is make it more user-friendly, and that would be including graphics and illustrations, photographs, to help people understand the more complex parts of the code. We are also really excited to be working with Olson Studio. We've worked with them on a number of comprehensive plans, and this will be, for me, the first code that we've worked on together. And their team brings just great public engagement skills and the ability to bring the public into a project like this, which isn't necessarily inviting. Not everybody wants to sit down and talk about zoning or subdivision, and yet we want to hear from people. What do they think about changes in the county over time? We'll be working primarily with Shelby Ferguson. Also on our team, we'll have Taylor Plummer and Ken Doom. So you will see different combinations of us doing different meetings in the county across the project, and we would like to extend the invitation to you to join us at any point in the project when we're doing outreach and you feel like participating. Let's do the next slide. So Clarion Associates has been around for 31 years, going on 32, which to me doesn't sound super long, but for a firm that specializes in planning and land development regulations, we actually are turning into some of the old timers in this practice area. You can see we've done planning work in gold and zoning and land use work in kind of that darker green-blue across the country, including some work in Kansas and Missouri, some work in Nebraska and Iowa. We work for cities, counties, and towns. At the moment, Paul, Eliza, and I are actually doing a lot of county work. It's very satisfying work. It is, it has different levels of nuance to it than working for a city does, and we appreciate being able to work in Johnson County. Let's go to the next slide. So Olson Studio, in their Kansas City office, they are, of course, headquartered out of Nebraska, but located in a lot of places these days. They've grown substantially over the past 20 years. And so the group we're working with, as I touched on earlier, is really the community outreach and engagement group. And they are helping us both craft an overall public engagement plan and figure out how we put the information together on a meeting-by-meeting basis. Shelby will be with us for some of the meetings in the future, and I just couldn't be more grateful for the wealth of knowledge they bring to this project. Next slide. So I think that's it. Paul, I'm going to switch to you at this point, and then I will be back to help answer questions. Thank you.
All right, thanks. Yeah, my name is Paul Donigan. I'm Senior Associate with Clarion. And apologies that my camera is not working, but I will be walking through the good portion of this presentation. A little bit about what we're going to talk about with you today is the scope and timeline of the project, a little bit more about how we plan to approach marketing and outreach for the projects. We can get a good amount of involvement from the community. We want to let you know some of the key partners that we'll be working with through the project, as well as the drafting process, how we will be approaching that, and our thinking on that, as well as some next steps. First of all, for the scope and timeline, it's a four-phase project where the first phase is a little bit of just background research, getting to know the data and the information that's relevant. And then we're sort of bridging the second and third phase right now. You all are our sort of last kickoff meeting that we've done. We've been meeting with the Board of County Commissioners, Planning Commission. We met with the East Zoning Board earlier this month, and so we're really kind of wrapping up this second phase, which will sort of culminate in the, in this annotated outline and code audit, which is essentially a summary of all the information that we've been gathering from meetings like this and with other stakeholders and community members, and review of the existing regulations, sort of identifying the things that, from an outside perspective and from what we hear from those working with and on the code every day are or are not working, so that we can identify the things that should maybe change going forward and those things that should stay the same. And then this next phase that we're sort of kicking off now is the actual drafting of the regulations. Throughout the process, which will be going all the way until March 2026, there will be a good amount of community engagement. And I think that's part of the reason why the project takes so long, is we really don't want to power through the process, drafting information, and then dropping a giant document on your lap right there at the end to review. We really want to be reviewing the document, giving people opportunities to weigh in on key issues throughout the process. And so when we get to that fourth and final phase, the code is not necessarily new information, and there's, you know, not a lot of big policy decisions to make. And so we know that you guys deal with the code pretty regularly as part of reviewing and approving proposals. So we do want to hear from you throughout the process about some of those things that you all note could be changed or improved. For community engagement, we really want to bring this information to the public as much as possible. We want to, as, you know, I think you all know as much as anyone that zoning is not a sexy topic or an easy-to-understand topic. And so wherever possible, really having information be as accessible and interactive so that the community can feel like they're not only learning a little bit more about zoning, but also able to share their input and information on the project as it goes forward. Some of the ways will be letting people know about the project and collecting information from the community will be through our project website, which will be housed on your Johnson County website. There will be a webpage that's currently being built right now by your web development team. There will be opportunities to subscribe for email updates throughout the project, and that will be built into that webpage. We'll be using the existing social media channels that Johnson County has already created to help push out information to the community and get people to show up to meetings or provide information to us online through things like online surveys and opportunities to participate online. So there will be a good amount of effort put into letting people know what's going on, as well as providing a little bit of education on what zoning is and what this project is all about. Some of the key partnerships will be working with the county commissioners, of course, will sort of be the final decision-making folks. We also have formed an advisory committee, and some of you are probably involved in that already. We've had one meeting so far as sort of the kickoff to that committee, but we'll be having more going forward, and that includes planning commissioners, members from the East and West zoning boards, as well as county residents. And then we'll also be providing updates to the Planning Commission and zoning boards throughout the process. The other group will be the project team, which is made up of our consulting team, as well as county staff members, led by the planning, planning department folks that are standing before you right now. But we'll also be meeting with a lot of other departments as well, because the zoning code does touch on so many topics that overlap, things like public works and engineering as well. Some of the efforts that have already been underway, we've been doing these project kickoff meetings, we'll be doing stakeholder and focus group meetings, actually more so in November and into December, and then working with our advisory committee. We've had our first meeting with them in October, and then looking forward to doing some public meetings going forward. I think we haven't had any big public meetings yet, but that is sort of things that are on the radar right now. And essentially, part of this process is getting a little bit of information in front of people to react to. So that's, that's where things stand so far. Some of the other stakeholder events that will be planned going forward include providing the advisory committee opportunities to review information and provide sort of a technical feedback and review. So we'll be hosting meetings with them, as well as stakeholders and the public, to sort of address some of these key issues and provide some, some feedback as we draft through the process. So it will be iterative. When we come out with a draft of, of anything, it won't be the final draft until it is the final draft in the spring of 2026. But we do want to make sure people are able to react to and review information as it comes out. And, and so that will be happening as well, you know, through those, through those groups that we've identified. And then the very end, the adoption will be spring of 2026 with those public hearings of the Planning Commission and Board of County Commissioners to adopt the updated zoning and subdivision regulations. Some upcoming engagement will be the stakeholder focus group meetings. Those are scheduled for Monday, December 9th. I think we'll probably have some, some follow-up. Some of the groups we'll be meeting with include developers, real estate folks, agricultural community, and, you know, some of these other groups that, that tend to be interested in sort of how the, how the county grows and develops over time. So that sort of is a little bit of background. I'll now dive into a little bit about the process for updating the zoning and subdivision regulations. These are sort of the, some of the key themes that have come out so far. We first and foremost want to implement your Johnson County Rural Comprehensive Plan, as well as any other plans and policies that you guys use to, to guide future development. And that's, that's really important, because we know that, that, that plan has been updated over the years and continues to provide relevant guiding information. And, and so we want to definitely rely on that as much as possible. We also want to make sure that we're focusing on improving user-friendliness. We want to be using clear, concise, plain language wherever possible. We want to incorporate graphics and tables and flow charts and lists instead of huge pages of, of regulatory language. We like to work on focusing on regulating the things that matter most to the community, not necessarily providing regulations for things that you all don't need. So I think that's really part of our process that really varies community to community, where you don't, you know, roll out a one-size-fits-all approach to, to the, the update process to the zoning and subdivision regulations. It really varies by what matters most to your community. And I think we'll also have opportunities to tailor those standards to different contexts in the community. So not just regulating what matters, but recognizing that there's going to be different issues and concerns in Western Johnson County compared to an area like Stillwell. So we want to make sure that that's part of the focus. Another key thing is making sure that the regulations are reflecting modern development types. That's part, that those sorts of things change over time as development patterns change and the economy changes and housing needs change. And, and so there's going to be an interest, I think, in looking at how the code can accommodate different types of housing. We also know that it's a county context. There are severe and pretty fixed infrastructure limitations, not just roads, but also water and wastewater. And so that's going to be important, that all of those factors align. The other key thing is really this balancing predictability and flexibility. A lot of what we hear about the code these days is that those, those may be butt heads a little bit, and those do sort of have different intentions. On one hand, we want a code that people that are putting an application in know how long it's going to take to get through the application process and what steps that they need to, to do in order to get through. We also know that people want to know, have a little bit of predictability about what's going to happen next door to them as part of the, you know, the development process. We also know that each piece of land is different, and so if you have an extra-rigid code that doesn't provide any flexibility, you're going to have some issues with, with getting sort of reasonable projects that make sense for Johnson County through the process. So balancing those. We want to reduce conflicts and inconsistencies between the zoning and subdivision regulations and other codes. That's often, you know, looking at building code and engineering standards. We also, you know, wherever possible, integrate some best practices that, the things that other communities like Johnson County are doing, but making sure that those are tailored to Johnson County and not necessarily bringing in, you know, new best practices that, that don't, that don't resonate with the community. And lastly, because this is a legal document, we want to make sure that it's legally sound and defensible, and Johnson County is not getting sued for anything. And so that's a big part of, of our process as well. In terms of implementing the plan, I, I've mentioned this already. You have quite a bit of great guiding information in terms of where development is expected to go and how it should look. And so really, it's a matter of making sure that this updated zoning and subdivision regulations reflects that. I think we want to make sure we're not getting too far away from the good foundation that you've already established from your rural comprehensive plan. For modernizing the regulations, I think, you know, we'll be trying to move towards a sort of one-stop shop for all these zoning and subdivision regulations instead of the, the current setup where there's, you know, a good amount of PDF documents on the website that aren't necessarily connected to each other, and it's not always clear which information is stored where. And in some cases, the same information might be stored in multiple places within the document. So I think creating a clear structure and organization will be really important. It'll make it so that when we are, you know, improving the standards so that they're effective for modern development types, that, that, that information's not, not lost. I already talked a little bit about regulating land use and infrastructure together. We also want to fill regulatory gaps where we hear issues brought up by the community. For example, when we were speaking with the East Zoning Board, we heard a little bit about concerns about lighting at night in the Stillwell area and the East, East Zoning Board jurisdictions. And so that's sort of an area where we know that there's interest in exploring different regulations than are currently available. And so I think we want to hear from, from you all in the community throughout the process about those areas where people think there's not enough regulation on something. I've already mentioned sort of balancing predictability and flexibility. We know that also the code needs to work in a lot of different settings. There are areas right up against these growing, fast, fast-growing incorporated cities, and there's a lot of areas that are very rural, very agricultural. And so the standards that apply in those areas might look a lot different. For example, sometimes in a, in a county context, in a more urban or suburban environment, it might make sense to require that parking for a commercial development is paved. But in a rural area where there's maybe not the same level of, of traffic and, and that sort of thing, I think that having, you know, gravel, gravel parking lots might make sense. So that sort of thing, making sure we're, we're not creating a one-size-fits-all. For the user-friendliness, here's just some examples of sort of what that looks like. I think we want to be incorporating graphics and photos. The example on the left is, is an example of what a zoning district page might be, where we can fit all or most of the information for what you need to know about developing in a certain zoning district. It'd be on one page, including a clear purpose statement that tells you a little bit about what type of development might occur there. And then a graphic that not only shows you the intended character of the, the district, but also is keyed towards specific lot and building standards. And so that can be a helpful tool so that, you know, not just the savvy developers, but people who are just wanting to know what they can do with their property are able to really access that information in an easy way. And then the other two graphics show a little bit of information about how we can be more transparent with the development review process through flow charts and tables that sort of show you, you know, for different development permits. These are the steps that need to take place. This is sort of the order of operations. This is, you know, what to expect, and I think that that can be a really helpful tool to creating a development process that is easy for applicants, easy for staff, easy for decision-makers such as yourselves. So some of the things we've heard so far are, we have heard a little bit about housing needs and recognizing that there is limitations with infrastructure. We, we know that there's already been a lot of effort with permitting accessory dwelling units in Johnson County. So we think that that's something we've, we've heard has been a positive. We know that there's been, that there's some unique communities, and so I think that is also a strength as we see it, that it's important to, to help protect and preserve those communities to the extent possible. I think there's been interest in some different types of regulations where people want to know how they can address some different issues, whether it has to do with outdoor lighting, conditional use permits, that sort of thing. How can we address those in a, in a better way? And we have a lot of passionate community members that we've already been hearing from. And so we think that's a positive, that people are interested and care a lot about their community. We think that there's also, I don't, I don't know if this is really a challenge or necessarily a complete lack of alignment, but we want to make sure that, I think, going forward, that there is clear alignment between what the zoning regulations are calling for and what local planning documents say should be happening moving forward. I've talked a little bit about some of the proposals for updating procedures and sort of the review process, and I think that's an area where there's a lot of room for improvement. And then, as I mentioned before as well, I think we need to make sure that the, the regulations that come forward are not one-size-fits-all and really reflect the different contexts of the communities so that, so that there's a little bit of variation, I think, in terms of what's possible in a suburban environment versus a rural, more agricultural environment. so that there's a little bit of uh variation, I think, in terms of what's possible in an in a suburban environment versus um a rural, more agricultural environment. So um before we um open it up for questions, a few, a little bit of next steps. Coming soon, the project website, which will be on the the county's website. Um the zoning code audit and annotated outline that um draft is um being um reviewed and um updated going back and forth um between the project team members. We um have done an advisory committee meeting, but we'll be doing an additional advisory committee meeting um to help walk through that zoning code audit and annotated outline. Um there will be opportunities for the public um as well as yourselves to review the zoning code audit um and provide feedback on that. And then we are in the process of starting to um dive in on updating zoning districts and uses um and looking for ways that um we can sort of address some of these key themes that we've talked about in this presentation. And then um as I mentioned earlier, um in December, we'll be doing some stakeholder meetings with um different people that use the code regularly um and have some insight into areas that they think um could be improved or areas that they think, hey, this seems to be working. Um don't mess with something that's um not broken. So those are sort of the next steps. Um and I will um open up the floor to um questions.
Buddy, I do have a comment if somebody's got a question.
Well, Terry Atwell, first off, who on our board is serving on this?
I'm on the, I can, what's it called, the planning group or advisory group? Does anybody else from this?
I am also on the advisory committee.
Roger, Craig.
And I'll mention too, this is Sean Penn, the planning staff. Uh Jeff Huff is also one of the representatives for the zoning boards. We have representatives from the zoning board and the planning commission. So I think Craig is technically the planning commission representative. And then there's two, so we have two representatives from each zoning board. And there's three total planning commissioners. But on this board, there'll be three members uh serving on the advisory committee.
Okay, thank you for that. And then I don't know if uh I'll I'll just bring this up. Hopefully you guys can address this. So Jay knows that I have uh issues with the regulations on us residents that don't sit on a nominal ten acres when it comes to um uh the keeping of livestock. So I definitely, I have advocated for this change probably since 2010. And I really hope that it gets done this time. So the issue is, is that for somebody like me that does not live on a nominal ten acres, I am told that I can't basically, I can't have cattle. And that clearly goes against state statute. So if I am breeding, birthing and butchering, that is agriculture. If I, you know, we need to make sure that we're not going against agricultural statutes and implying these regulations on people that are on less than a nominal ten acres. So that's my pet peeve, and I would like to see that addressed and changed. Because I don't want you guys coming after me when I get my little cattle.
I could just make a comment, uh Jay Leipzig, uh planning staff. Uh yes, thank you, Commissioner, for that comment. That uh kind of points to uh what Paul had said about uh balancing predictability and flexibility. We we need to have the regulations be as as user friendly as they can be, but also off offer some flexibility. Um Elizabeth Garvin, as she said, is an attorney. And so that's one of the the main components of this, to make ensure that everything is consistent with state state law. Uh and also national best practices for planning and working in counties where we have that that uh kind of uh separation between uh agriculture and more suburban type of development and ensuring that we balance both of those together.
Okay, yeah, Terry Atwell again. So here's another prime example of where the current regulation does not work for um the unincorporated area. We have a lot of kids that are in four H. And if you are on less than a nominal ten acres and you want to have a bucket calf for a project at the Johnson County Fair, you technically are required to go get a conditional use permit to have that. So these things need to be changed. So I appreciate it.
Greg Connell, uh Paul, can you go back to slide eighteen? Under challenges, the third bullet down, infrastructure limits development. You know, maybe from a developer's point of view, that might be a challenge. But from those of us that live in the rural areas, I think that's a strength. Because I would, my philosophy is I'd like to limit development, frankly, of the rest of Johnson County. But I know it's going to happen eventually. But um I don't, we got to balance the viewpoint here of what's important to the residents, whether they're within the city's limits or whether they're in the rural part of the county.
Bob Paulson, I just want to make a comment on that same slide. Um interest in integrating the new regulations, the code uh you reference in the dark sky ordinance lighting. That's a big pet peeve of mine because right now, next door to me is a agribusiness or agritourism business that has parking lot lighting that looks like a stadium right now. Um whenever they've got anything going, it is lit up. You can see it from miles away. I want to see things like that um, you know, to protect our dark skies that we enjoy or used to enjoy. That's all I had to say.
Mr. Chairman, Sean Penn, the planning staff. I will um reiterate, um kind of respond to a couple of those comments. Those are great comments. And I know um in working with Clarion, they're aware of these items too. Staff has provided them with some additional input. We do uh aware are aware of the infrastructure limits. I think, I'm not going to speak for Paul, but I think what is meant by that challenge, we have reiterated to the consultant about that importance of infrastructure planning. It is a, it's a priority in the regulations today. We want to address that with any updates. Um we do understand there does need to be a limit on infrastructure. One of the challenges might be, I think the reason why it might be considered a challenge is just because it's hard to impose certain requirements on certain types of development when sometimes it's not warranted maybe. So for example, if we have a plat, if you recall the last meeting, we had a preliminary and final plat for eight lots. And there were, it's R U R zoning. So it's relatively low density residential and but there was a gravel road, one of those archers is gravel road. And if you recall, there was questions about, well, should that be paved? That's um, you, I I could see that could go both ways. You could consider that a challenge or consider it a strength and it and it's not a problem. But it's one of those things we want to address. So I think what's meant by that is we want to make sure we're addressing that to make sure it's still um a priority and that we uh are capturing the need. So that's one of the reasons we want to address that. Animals and agricultural uses, absolutely. We listed that as one of the things we want to address with this update. Uh because we are aware, if it's for agricultural purposes, it should be allowed almost really regardless of property size. So we'll we'll certainly address that with this update. And then uh lighting and agritourism uses, absolutely. We know that's a, those are really difficult to handle, especially considering uh if a property has an agritourism certificate, they're exempt from our zoning regulations. So that's a challenge. But we do want to address lighting for sure. One way or another, we want to develop standards and um and, you know, Clarion's very very well aware of that. And they, we will rely on them for that guidance on how we could uh propose standards to address lighting in the unincorporated area. So these are all great comments and yeah, we we appreciate that.
Okay, is that's all the questions, comments we have?
I'm sorry, this is Elizabeth Garvin. May I jump in? Would that be okay, Mr. Chairman? Thank you. I just wanted to thank everyone for the comments off the top of your heads. Um this evening, there will be more um draft regulations in front of you as you go along. So you'll be able to um read and comment. Um this is probably the hardest part of the project, and I think Paul pointed that out. Um we, and as as Sean, um you know, clearly um shared back with you, you've you've touched on some of the biggest things that we've been talking about. Um and we intend um to look at the different options that the county has um to regulate for um the needs of the people who want to live in the county and have it feel like a county um and dealing with the ag uses. And um to the extent that we can deal with the lighting, um I think that that's um, you know, that how do we work with and potentially around the um agritourism is high on our list. So we look forward to coming back to you um with our ideas both about um the regulatory language and the process by which we help people understand what they're supposed to be doing um within the regulations. And um we thank you for listening to us tonight and giving us this immediate feedback. Um I also just wanted to let you know, I was giggling over here when we were talking about cows and pet peeves. Somehow I feel like there's a pun in there.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh Jay Leipzig, just got to reiterate again that we're excited about uh starting this process. And I think we will certainly keep you all, you know, informed on a regular basis, also for the public. Um if you um please check back on the county's website, the planning department's website. We'll have all the documents as they're developed and any any new information will be placed on that that web portal. So um stay tuned in this process. We're looking forward to it. Uh for the next year, we'll be discussing various issues associated with this. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, now we'll go to the business before the board. Item A is application number W twenty four dash four twenty dash P P and W twenty four dash four twenty one dash F P. Preliminary and final plat, one, four, four, five, five, Kill Creek Road. We have a presentation from Karen. I guess we do.
Thank you. Karen Miller with the uh Planning Office. Uh this is a request for a preliminary and final plat for four residential lots to be known as Prairie Creek Replat Lot One. As you can see from the graphic, the subject property is located at the southeast corner of one hundred and forty third street and Kill Creek Road. Kill Creek has a gravel surface and one hundred and forty third street has a chip seal surface. As you can see from this um graphic, there um here in this location is an existing house and an existing driveway. And um if this plat is approved, this existing driveway will be removed and replaced by a local street, which we'll talk about um in a little bit. And this existing um lot two, I'm sorry, this existing house will be located on lot two of the plat. Here's the uh the final plat and you can see um it's a forty two acre parcel. It's proposed to be divided into three ten acre lots and one twelve acre lot. This is lot one um at the north part of the uh the subject property. It will be the twelve acre lot. This is lot two that will have the existing house and it'll also an entirely um include the existing septic system. Lot three will be vacant, lot four um will also be vacant. And um it, here is the location of the existing drive. It will be removed and all four lots will access this new local road. It'll be called one hundred and forty third street. All of these lots meet the the rural district's ten acre minimum lot area requirement and um.
Terry Atwell, Karen.
Yeah.
You said that New Collector Street is one hundred and forty third. That can't be correct.
Hundred and forty fourth, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Thank you for correcting me. And then um this new local road is proposed proposed in order to uphold CARNIP, which stands for Comprehensive Arterial Road Network Plan, uh by preventing new non-conforming entrances onto Kill Creek Road. Um and I'll expand a little bit on this um in a little in a little while. And um here is also the um, one of the preliminary plats. And you can see the the aerial um underneath all of the lot lines. Here you can see the lot two with the existing house. You can see the existing driveway. And what the county is interested in is the removal of this this access right here. Now I'll move on to looking a little bit more at the street requirements from the zoning regulations. In this location, one hundred and forty third street is designated as a type one CARNIP. Road driveway entrances onto one hundred and forty third street are not proposed due to site distance restrictions. So there will be no no lots taking access onto one hundred and forty third street. Um in this location, Kill Creek Road is a a type three CARNIP road and it requires at least one thousand three hundred and twenty feet of frontage per driveway entrance. That's a quarter mile. In this particular situation, the existing frontage onto Kill Creek Road is only about six hundred feet. So this entire front frontage is only six hundred, sixteen hundred feet. As a result, a total of only one access is allowed by CARNIP. Right now, the one access allowed is Kill Creek Road. So what this plat will do, it will remove this, the access allowed and move it up here. And the access instead of a driveway will be um a new local road. In order to allow this new road, a plat exception is requested from the zoning regulations, street spacing requirement. This requirement is that there should be at least two thousand six hundred, six hundred and forty feet between street intersections. That's a half mile. Um and um the proposed spacing um instead between one hundred and forty third street and the new one hundred and forty fourth street is approximately eight hundred and seventy five feet. So a plat exception would be required for that for that spacing, street intersection spacing. And staff recommends approval of this plat exception. So here are some of uh planning's analysis of this. These are, this is what staff took into account to recommend approval of this. So um in general, it's the intent and purpose of the regulations and of CARNIP, that Comprehensive Arterial Road Network Plan. Um in this is, in this instance, to maintain the free flow of traffic along Kill Creek Road, which is the type three CARNIP road between major destinations in the county and the greater regions. Um the adopted street intersection spacing and driveway frontage requirements along CARNIP roads um support this goal by limiting the number of access points along this portion of Kill Creek and other arterial arterial roads. So in response to these requirements, the proposed subdivision layout with the new local road onto Kill Creek is designed to limit additional entrances with direct access along the road. And this is an approach specifically adopted in the regulations. The regulations state that construction of new streets is an option for situations that do not meet the street frontage requirement for driveways. So the 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 whole kind of um spirit of this analysis is that when considering the entire situation for the proposed plat with a new street and um if you remove the existing driveway entrance, the net result of the proposal continues to be one access point along Kill Creek, the Kill Creek Road frontage. So um by maintaining just one access point, um the request is not in conflict with the the spirit and intent and the mission of CARNIP, which is to maximize the utility of the county's um arterial road network in order to meet anticipated needs. So in order to look to the future, what we would need in the future, not necessarily now. And then lastly, our analysis included um asking Public Works um their opinion on this proposal. Public Works is not opposed to the request for the plat exception. In this instance, based on the applicant's reasons for the plat exception and provided that the existing driveway along Kill Creek Road is removed and that no new entrances are installed along one hundred and forty third street. And that's due to the site distance constraints and safety concerns. So so based on um this whole um consideration and analysis, staff approves uh recommends approval of the plat exception. And the entire staff, the entire analysis is in the staff report. So that ends the plat exception review. In addition to streets, staff considered other minimum infrastructure requirements, and have found that all of these requirements regarding minimum infrastructure have been met. For example, the stormwater and storm drainage has been reviewed for the plat, and also there's plenty of water. There's a 12-inch water main and two fire hydrants along the property, along the Kill Creek Road frontage. And as a note, there's two existing fire hydrants, but there will need to be one more fire hydrant in order to provide Lots 2 and 3 with fire protection. And that is covered with a stipulation. So based on the entire staff report, the staff recommends approval of the plat. Specifically, we recommend approval of the preliminary and final plat for the four lots to be known as Prairie Creek Replat 1. Staff also recommends stipulations of approval, including stipulations addressing construction of the new street, installation of the fire hydrant, and adding limits of no access along 143rd Street, along its entirety. Staff also, as I mentioned, recommends the plat exception approval to allow street spacing of 875 feet along a Type 3 CARNEP road where 2,640 is required in order to avoid additional entrances onto the parkway. And so the reasons for recommendation of the plat is that if the plat exception's granted, then the plats are consistent with the subdivision regulations, and also the proposed plats are consistent with the requirement, requirements of the RUR zoning district. And reasons to approve the plat exceptions are that it's compatible with the surrounding neighborhood, it's neither contrary to the public interest or unnecessarily burdens the county, does not annul the intent and purpose of the regulations, and is not opposed by Public Works staff. And so lastly, here is a motion for approval if you desire to use it. And in terms of comments from the public, I've received two phone calls from people living within the area. And just real broadly, one person was concerned about the safety of 143rd Street. That person thought that the site distance wasn't adequate, which staff has addressed in our stipulations. And then a second person had general questions about it. And I let them know that they could show up, they could present their views, or they could submit something to me. So I didn't receive any other follow-up from those people. And also, just, there's a couple people in the audience. I know at least one person would like to speak. And then lastly, the applicant agrees to all the recommended stipulations and is here today. They're not planning a presentation, but they're here to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thanks, Karen. Any questions from Karen from the board?
Terri, well, I have one, Karen. What is the new street going to be constructed of?
We have a standard, and it will be asphalt. But Public Works is here if you have any further questions.
Yeah, Scott Karyorgas, Public Works, that's right. It'll be per county standards paved to asphalt, same thing we do for any new local residential streets.
Karen, Craig Connell, I have a question for you. Going south from 144th Street, what's the next, what's the distance to the next driveway or street? Is it more than 874 feet?
So on which frontage, on Kill Creek?
Sorry, yeah, on Kill Creek. South of 144, the new street, 144th.
What's the distance from other driveways?
The next driveway south? Or does it go to Clurt on 151st Street?
No, there are, there are other driveways. I'm trying to think if there are any of my...
I mean, since you didn't talk about that, I assume that distance is more than adequate for the regulations?
So the next driveway would be down here? To be honest, I can't give you an exact number. So I'm sorry.
Okay. That was looked at, I assume, in terms of distance and all that?
This is Scott Karyorgas, Public Works. The main thing we were concerned with was the spacing from the intersection, which it meets a 600-foot requirement. I can't remember the distance off the top of my head to the next driveway to the south, but it had adequate distance and spacing there.
All right, thank you. Okay, any other?
Roger Spears. I don't have anything at all against the proposed road. I think it's an excellent solution to the driveway problem. But it's ironic to me that this section of Kill Creek, that Kill Creek Road is a CARNEP Type 3 road, which is an arterial road by definition, yet it only runs from 151st to 143rd, is a two-lane gravel road with not improved ditches on the sides. The next section of it to the north is from 115th to the north up to K10, I believe. And I understand that it's a part of the Northwest Corridor's expansion study that was done back in 1995 to 2001 or 2. But the irony of the driveway requirements on this section of roadway is interesting to me. And I'm hoping that in our, in our work to come, that that, considering Panasonic and the intermodal facility and the infrastructure that's going to be required for that, that we take a look at things like Kill Creek Road. And one other comment, you mentioned the concern about site distance on 143rd. I believe that that's because of the fact that this intersection of Kill Creek and 143rd is at the bottom of the grade. And the section going to the east is fairly steep uphill grade to the top of the hill, which creates, and it's wooded in that area, which does create site distance concerns. So I fully support that having a driveway out of this property onto 143rd would be a bad idea.
Yes. Terri, well, Roger, I totally concur on your assessment on that Type 3. I hope you guys look at that and get that, that changed down to a Type 1, because that's never gonna end up being part of that because of the Panasonic plant. They're gonna run that clear around. So thanks for bringing that up.
And so just to note, there is a connection study going on right now. They will look at it, and we will see those, those results and recommendations fairly soon. It'll be, it'll be a little bit.
Yeah, this is Sean Pendley, County Planner and Staff. As Karen noted, that, that study that is ongoing is in coordination with Johnson County, the neighboring cities, De Soto, Olatha, Gardner, Edgerton, and KDOT. And our consultant, the consultant working on that, HNTB. As Karen mentioned, the results of that study, we expect sometime, I think, early 2025, that once those results are presented, there will be, we would anticipate updating the CARNEP plan as a result of that. We don't know a timeline yet on that, but that is something that will be addressed, the CARNEP recommendations. And then that will result in an update for that plan. So that's one of the outcomes, and we would expect that sometime within the next year to review that, that update.
John DeGrand, I do have one question. 144th Street, is that being constructed by the county? Or is it being constructed by the developer and then dedicated to the county for maintenance?
It'll be by the developer and then dedicated per our typical street standards and right of way dedication. Yep.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the board? Okay, the applicant is here, whoever that is. Did you want to say anything or? All right, are there any questions of the applicant? Okay. Any public comments? Melissa, does anybody on, oh. Could you come to the microphone, please, and give us your name and address and your comment, question?
We can interact, neighbor across the street to the west on 143rd and Kill Creek. Location of the houses, is that determined by authorizing the plating of the land?
Sean Pendley, Planner and Staff, we can answer any questions following all the, any public comments, but we'll be happy to answer that. And if we need to, we can also bring the applicant up.
Okay, we're gonna accumulate these questions and then answer them at the end.
Okay.
Give them another question or?
That was the concern, the question that I had, just the location of the houses, just because of the, like you said, the 143rd and the Kill Creek. And I don't know if that was tied in to where the existing structure is and how the distance between houses have to be determined. So that was my question.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other questions from the group? Anybody online, Melissa, that wants to comment?
We have one person, but they have not indicated that they wish to speak. So just a reminder, if you're wanting to provide a public comment and you're on Zoom, use the raise hand function.
Okay, Karen, you want to address the question?
Sure. The way that houses are handled is by setbacks. So each, let me get to here. So each lot has a required distance that you have to stay away from the property lines. And so the side and rear setbacks will be 25 feet. And along here, the front yard setback will be 50 feet. And that is the, and really, and staying out of the floodplains and other, other regulated areas. But other than that, these vacant lots, the homeowner can choose the location of their house.
Anything else you wanted to add to that? Sean or anybody else? Okay.
Nothing.
Yeah, I guess, do you have a follow-up question to that? Or you're, okay, great, thank you. Okay, any other discussion from the board? Are we ready to entertain a motion?
I can make the motion if you want me to.
I'd like to propose the motion.
I do, okay, can you hold that out? Terri Atwell, I move to approve application number W 24-420-PP and W 24-421-FP for a preliminary and final plat for four residential lots to be known as Prairie Creek Replat 1, and to approve the requested plat exception for the reasons and subject to the stipulations recommended by staff and listed in the staff report.
Have a second?
Donna Gutzman, second.
Melissa, can we have a roll call, please?
Yes, Craig Connell.
Aye.
John DeGrand.
Aye.
Terri Atwell.
Aye.
Donna Gutzman.
Aye.
Bob Paulson.
Aye.
And Roger Spears.
Aye.
Thank you, motion passes.
Okay, thank you. Next item on the agenda is...
Just one, just one little comment. This item will be considered by the Board of County Commissioners on January 9, 2025, in the board hearing room, which is this room at 111 South Cherry Street. Thank you.
Thank you. Next item is application number W 24-435-CUP. They've requested to be postponed to the February 19 meeting. Have a motion to, we accept that?
John DeGrand, I move that we continue Application B to the February 19, 2025 meeting.
You have a second?
Roger Spears, second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Okay. Is there any other business in front of the board?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman, Sean Pendley, County Planner and Staff. Yeah, that's an odd date, I know, just to go back on that last time, just so you know, the reason why the applicant's requesting a continuance for so long, they will have to go through a variance process for that particular application. So they'll be handling that as a separate application that'll go to the Board of Zoning Appeals. So that's the reason why for the long delay. So staff was in agreement with that, and that's the proper process for that one. The other item I did want to note, our next meeting is scheduled for December 11. And that will be the special meeting date that we scheduled for the pending application for the Sunflower Quarry CUP. They're requesting an amendment to an existing conditional use permit for the Sunflower Quarry, located off of 95th Street, near 95th and Kill Creek Road. So that application is scheduled for that hearing date. We are reviewing that application. We'll be sending out the packet as scheduled the week before, so that week of December 2. And we will try to get all that information out. We do anticipate a pretty good turnout if the last conditional use permit was any indication. There will be several property owners that will be notified as that process, since it is a large property, and they're requesting an amendment to the application. Of course, we can't go into any details for discussion on that. It's not on this agenda. But we did want to provide an update and just make sure that everyone is aware of that meeting day for December 11, to see if you're available for that meeting. Then we also do have a regularly scheduled meeting for December 18. There are no applications scheduled for that meeting at this time. However, for whatever reason, if we are not able to hold the meeting on the December 11 date, we wanted that to be, still hold that meeting as a backup. So just wanted to check with the board and make sure you're still available for either and both dates, December 11 and December 18. We'll be sending out an update, but if there are any conflicts, please let us know, and we'll make sure we do have a quorum for those meetings.
All right, thank you, Sean. Any other business?
Mr. Chairman, Jay Leipzig, one thing I was going to offer for that meeting, because I have a feeling that will be, could be a late evening for you. We can have a, some light, some sandwiches available for you, probably beginning at 6 o'clock, just something light for you to eat as well. So I have a feeling, because that might be a late night, and if it's convenient for you, we could certainly do that. We have it for you about 6 o'clock, if you choose to come early to that meeting. Okay?
Thank you. All right, if there's no other business, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Roger Spears, move that we adjourn.
Terri Atwell, second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We're adjourned.